Okay, we'll call the meeting to order and we're gonna start with the pledge. Thanks for coming out, everybody. The clerk reminded me that if you didn't sign in on your way in, if you could sign in on your way out, there's a sheet there, she keeps track of everybody who attends the meetings, that'd be appreciated. We'll start with the approval of the agenda, any additions or corrections, Dan?
I have none.
Dwayne?
None.
Ryan?
None.
Okay, I've got a few here. We're gonna add A2J, a pay request for the trail that was finished, that bill came in after the packet was published, it is in the Dropbox now. We're gonna add J3, resolution for the right of entry for Highway 57 project. That's under the engineers report, also under the engineers report, we're gonna add J3 right of entry forms, we have all the forms that were signed there, we'll approve those tonight. J23, the bid tabulation for the water tower project, those came in, those bids were open this afternoon. And we're gonna add under L1, attorney's report, closed session to discuss the redding litigation. And then A2K is added, that's also in the Dropbox in your packet, not waiving the limit for liability coverage, that's a standard thing for the League of Minnesota Cities Insurance Policies, so that's under the consent agenda. And we're gonna remove B2, the park naming rights, that was part of the contract that was originally signed, so it's not necessary for a resolution, so. Anything else? Okay. Entertainer motion to approve the agenda has changed?
Make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, consent agenda, any questions for the administration on the consent agenda? Entertainer motion to approve as presented. Thanks, Mel.
I get it.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number one, the visitors, Hamilton Real Estate Group.
Including your packet, you've got some items, the Hamilton Real Estate folks have presented to us, memo, the EDA's been working with them on a couple of different items. Robert's here representing the EDA Board, and appreciate that, Robert, thank you very much. Basically, what they're looking at is a project in the Vale property area, so with that, I'll let the gentleman introduce yourselves for the record, just state your name and then what you're here to talk about.
Good evening, my name is Mac Hamilton.
Ryan Mulander.
Chad Benkin.
Ari Colas.
And collectively, we're the development arm of the Hamilton Real Estate Group. For those of you who aren't familiar with us, the Hamilton Real Estate was formed in 1979 with the help of the Mayo Clinic, who suggested they would become our first client. And we've been in the commercial real estate business since that time. We lease, manage, sell, and develop investment real estate. I'm gonna skip a lot of our history, because it doesn't really relate too much to this, but tell you that we started developing apartments in Rochester in 2009. At that time, very few apartments had been built, and particularly that were walkable to the Mayo Clinic in downtown. We, the first one we built was quite a success, and so we built a second, and a third, and a fourth, and a couple more, until 2015, when Mayo brokered their relationship with the state of Minnesota and formed Destination Medical Center. And at that time, the light bulb kinda went off, and the radar screen lit up, and developers from all over the world, not just the state of Minnesota, started to come to Rochester and build apartments. And the result was that we were getting overbuilt in that community, so we looked to areas that were underserved and in need of housing, and made our first relationship with the community of Owatonna, who were very receptive and helpful. We're currently building our fourth apartment development in the city of Owatonna, and we're working very closely with the city with our streetscaping project and in the downtown renovation, where we're building a Marriott Courtyard Hotel. We've also been active in Faribault. We've completed a project recently in Byron that some of you visited, that we kinda see as a model for what we'd like to suggest bringing to this community. So with that background, I'm gonna ask Ryan to take you through our presentation for what it is we'd like to bring to Cassin.
Good evening, council members, mayor, city staff, Ryan Mulander, Hamilton Real Estate Group. As Mac said, we've had a history in building projects like this since 2009, and we see a need here in Cassin to do something similar to that. What I'll do is I'll walk through what we're proposing, and you've gotten your packet, I believe, a letter, a request letter, and also a spreadsheet, I'll walk you through those details. My ask is, as we're going through, as I'm presenting, take some notes down, we'll put the questions towards the end, and then we can do a Q and A altogether and kinda go over all those questions together. We're proposing a three-story, 47-unit apartment building on your recently acquired Vale property. We don't have this in there, but I'm gonna show you, I'll pass around, I've got five, yep, I've got five drawings of something similar to what we've done in Byron, that's what we're looking to try to do here in the Cassin market. We started the discussion with Tim and Robert back in early September, and we've also known the EDA multiple times, we were at the October meeting to present our original idea. In November, the EDA actually came over and toured our Byron property, and then yesterday we were back at the EDA to present our request that they have formally passed along to you, the city council members. In your packets, you have the request, the spreadsheet, start with the request, and we'll work through some of these things. The request, as we said, we're doing a 47-unit project, the timeline would be to start construction in April, May of this coming year, 2022, completion March or April of 2023. What I wanna go through and show you too is, what's important when we're doing these projects is, it's a partnership, not only with you as a community, but it's also a partnership with investors and banks to make it work. And so when we start looking at the numbers, we have banks and investors that say, okay, we need to figure out a way to return that's gonna work to make sure you can pay back the debt service and provide a return. When we're looking at these projects, example, if it's an $8 million project, we usually like to put down 25%, which would be $2 million in this case, that means we've gotta raise $2 million from investors. And they like to return a 7% cap rate, capitalization rate. And I'll walk through what that all means here in the spreadsheet, and let's just start going through that. In front of you, you should have this spreadsheet, on the left side are the cost, it would cost to construct the project, everything from land building, floor coverings, to miscellaneous expenses, gets you down to the total project cost of 7.7 million, just under 8 million. Below that, shows you the anticipated first mortgage, equity to raise, annual debt service, and then it shows you that, here's the return we need to provide every year, net operating income, in order to meet 7%. So we need to be able to have a net operating income around $544,000. So how do we do that? In the middle are the columns that show you the annual revenues, the annual expenses. This is actually based on what we're proposing to build here, the number of bedrooms, the structure of the different rooms, showing you the units. The rates are based on where we think things are gonna be projected at as of now, obviously we're a year and a half away from when the doors would open, but it's based on our experience of doing this. Then below that, you've got the expenses for us to operate that. And so it shows you all the expenses that are put in there, gets you down to projected annual net income, which is 500, or 454,000, based on what we're projecting in revenues and expenses. Remember, if we go over to the left side, 544 was kinda that number that we were looking at, the cap rate there with that, based on the revenues and expenses is 5.85%, and just to put it in numbers of dollars and cents, that's about an $89,000 gap per year. One thing I wanna highlight, which I did highlight on here in yellow, is the real estate taxes, part of our request will be asking for a tax abatement assistance, we always know there's gonna be part of that that we're gonna pay in taxes, but as you can see, that number would almost make us whole to get us to the numbers for our investors and for our bankers. If we jump back over to the actual request, go through the bullet points on there. Number one on there is purchase price of the property and the rebate, we've been working with Robert and Tim on this, what we're proposing is to pay $2.55 a square foot for the land, 2.5 acres, and then upon completion of the project, we would have you rebate back $2 in, $2 per square foot. What does that do? Gives you upfront cash to start doing some infrastructure extensions that you need to do. It also puts us on the hook that we can't just buy the land for cheap and then sit on it, we're gonna do a project, which we'd never do, we wanna do a project. But it's a good way to make sure we move that forward, and that we actually have a project in place before the rebate comes back. Also, the other thing, we set the numbers up that way because we know that at $0.55 a square foot, that's what your costs were per square foot to acquire the Vale development part, so we wanna make sure you guys are made whole. That is an important thing when we're dealing with communities, we wanna make sure it's a partnership and that people are feeling that they're getting, both sides are getting a little bit of what they want. Next is the option, we're asking for an option on a neighboring two and a half acres. Reason we're doing that, in our communication or conversations, it sounds like there's a demand for more than 47 units in Cassin, but we wanna build one project, see how it opens up and how it stabilizes, and then have the potential to build another. So the request for the option is just to give us some time to make sure the demand is there in the market before we start our second one. The third bullet is the tax abatement that I talked about, and I'll just read through that, and then we can try to, I'll try to explain a little bit of what's going on there. Requesting ten years of property tax abatement, not yet determining what the terms of that are, you know, the request tonight is for support to move forward, to have those discussions. Assistance from the city of Cassin Dodge County School District. In return for that, what we would do is agree to follow Minnesota Housing's Affordable Housing Rental Rule, where you've gotta have 40% or more of your units at or below the rates that are set on their chart. What I'm talking about, Minnesota Housing has a chart for each county, Dodge County's right here. And how most TIFs are structured are, you have to present 40% or more of your units, you have to be leasing with the people that make 60% or less in the average median income. What we're seeing is, the most important part for communities, council members, is making sure the rates are affordable, but the problem with doing that under a TIF is then we have to fill the units with people that are making less than these caps. And an example, Byron's an example, we just did a study over there to see what's our current situation over there, how many units would meet the requirements, where would we be at? We had 11 units that would meet the requirements, again, a 47-unit project needs to have 19 or more, we had 11 units that would meet that requirement, of those, five of them were within $1,000 of those income limits, meaning the next time they gotta raise, cost of living adjustment, they would go over. And what happens in that situation is our investors and the banks get nervous, because then we have to start talking to the city about how do we make this work, we have units that are vacant, the numbers start not working. So what we're proposing is, we'll meet the requirements of keeping the rents where you want them, in return, you guys give us tax abatement, help us with tax abatement for the Dodge County and for the school district, and help us through that process. The final two bullet points are things we've been talking about from the beginning with Robert and Tim, waiving specific assessments or costs for the extension to public infrastructure, waive sack and wax, sewer and water access charges, park plan dedication fees, those type of fees. With this assistance, and but for this assistance, we aren't gonna be able to make the project go forward, and that's why we're requesting for you tonight to give us support, so that we can start the negotiation to see where we can take this down the road. With that, I'll open up for questions for Mac, myself, Chad, and Ari.
Thank you. Dan, questions?
Not right now, so.
Dwayne?
Not at this point.
Okay. Ryan, Mel, any particular?
You said you wanted, that you're looking at additional towards the west or south?
Yep, yeah, we would try to build the first project as close to the road that's existing already, again, trying to do that for a couple reasons, the infrastructure's right there, so it's not as long of extension, and then ultimately build another project next to it if we could.
What we'd like to do is to ask for a one-year option, friendly certificate of occupancy on the first building, so we should know within a year, whether this property filled up, whether it was successful, whether there was a market for a second building, and it may or may not be an identical building, it might be something bigger, or it might be smaller, but we'd like the opportunity to build another, presuming that this worked for everybody.
Yep.
Do you have one question, forgive me, you may have said this, but what is your present occupancy rate on the project in Byron?
100%.
All of our units are full.
Yep.
We don't have a vacancy. But it's Byron, Faribault, Owatonna, we don't have a vacancy.
Dan, anything?
Well, I mean, just a couple of things, so you've done a lot of market research and all that, and we've had good conversations about that. And you've talked a little bit about on Tuesday with the EDA, and I know the EDA did forward up a positive recommendation, just so the councils aware, they're very interested in this project, and they wanna leave it to you, but they do think it has a lot of merit, so it's for the councils to decide. I mean, what are you seeing trend-wise in our area, I mean, it seems like the council's very interested in doing multifamily, I mean, we have a lot of people that contact us about it, I mean, what are you seeing trend-wise for us in that area?
Well, we're lucky in one respect, in our little office building, our neighbor across the hall, is Bigelow Builders, and we've heard quite a bit of positivity about Cassin from Joel and Tony, and the need that they perceive to be in the community. So they've recommended that we work at Cassin, doesn't matter, and believe that it would be successful, and that the demand's there. So, that's really what we see.
Sure.
We think the demand will be here, and we're willing to take the risk for the budget.
Yeah, no, so, at the EDA, I've already heard that, so you kinda stole my first question of explaining there about why not TIF versus the abatement, so you handled that in there, so that was...
I guess I may.
Yep.
You asked about our occupancy, and I think the reason that we're full is because of the building that we've gradually refined, from each project, we've listened to the marketplace, and we've made each project a little better than the last. And we've always tried to keep, as Ryan was stressing here, affordability in there. There's a ratio in our business that tenants shouldn't pay more than 30% of their income to housing-related costs. So when you take the rents that we're charging, and that we're projecting here, they will be affordable to people who have reasonable jobs, and I think they'll be very appealing. Those of you who came through the Byron building, got a good sense of what it is that we'd be bringing to the community, and I believe it would be very well received.
Thank you. So I think our next step is to get behind the scenes here and look through the numbers and the requests, and see what we can do on our end to meet the need there, so. But it is a project that was identified during our comprehensive plan several years ago that multi-unit housing is a priority, so we're gonna take your request and our advisement, we'll be discussing that, and we'll have Tim and Robert get back to you with the next steps. Okay, appreciate it, thanks for coming out tonight.
Yes.
Public forum, I don't have any cards.
For your, you wanna do your appointment? Is there a Tom Munson for the EDA Board?
Oh, yeah, it's not on here, okay, yep. One second.
Sorry about that.
No.
Big expense for a building.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the mayor's report, we've got three appointments to make tonight, or recommendations of the council for positions on committees. The first one is to reappoint Tom Ferris to planning and zoning, and Tom Munson to the EDA Board, and then Fern Johnson is a new applicant for the library board, and I'd like to make the recommendation to the council to accept all three. Entertain a motion or questions?
I'd make the motion to move forward with the...
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, motion carries. Onto our public hearings, we're gonna have, the first one is under E1 in your packet, that's the public hearing for the annexation of the Golden Colonel Farms, so that information is in your packet. So we'll open up the public hearing, is there anybody here in the public that had comments that they would like to make? Okay, we'll close the public hearing on the annexation of the Golden Colonel Farms, there is a resolution in your packet, this was approved by the township, and it's been forwarded to the council for approval. It is one of the benefits of having the orderly annexation agreement with the township, that this is a much easier process than some cities and townships go through to try to get this done, so are there any questions for the administrator on this?
I just wanted to highlight a few things, this is in southwest Cassin, so it's along 34, the railroad tracks and the 14 intersection, it was a submittal that was brought to us about a month ago, so we're bringing it to you today, you know, it's an area where they haven't identified the final use of the property, so the process would be for us to bring it in as a DH district, a designated holding district, which would be then rezoned potentially in the future, at a time when the council would have another public hearing for that rezoning request. The folks who are farming it right now, I mean, that's a perfectly acceptable use, whatever the current use is right now, would be, continue to be able to be done for the foreseeable future until it's rezoned. We have encouraged them to meet with developers and discuss the project with them, so right now, that's kind of where this is, which is at, when we identified the number of lots that are available, we do think there's additional residential potential and commercial potential of this area, so, and it is in the orderly annexation zone on the west side of Cassin, so.
Perfect, thank you. Any questions? Entertainer motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same saying. Resolution passes. Second one is annexation of the Schudi property, we'll open the public hearing to that annexation, if there's anybody in the public who has any comments, we'll entertain that now.
I don't know, Dean, if you wanted to come and talk about it at all or not?
Um...
That's up to you, you don't have to...
You can say no.
Otherwise, I can talk about it a little bit, just describe it for him.
I think you can go ahead and...
Sure, so including your packets, you've also got the petition from Mr. Schudi for this parcel, which is in north-central Cassin area, between the dump road and Highway 57, and encompasses that parcel that abuts, you know, Mr. Bigelow to the south and the county to the north. It's a, it's a potential area for a lot of development, and Mr. Schudi has introduced a concept plan, which Planning and Zoning is gonna be giving some feedback at their next meeting on, so we appreciate that, and we see this as a definite, you know, definite potential for residential, commercial development, and possibly some high-density development as well, so it's all preliminary at this time, so just so you're aware that things may change, may decide to do different things, and he may start to develop parts of this earlier than others, you know, a lot of it depends on the market conditions, that we can't, you know, really know exactly how that's gonna go, but we do feel like this is obviously, it's abutting the property, and it's a strong area for development, so.
Perfect. We'll close the public hearing, any questions from council? Okay, entertainer motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan, do I have a second? Thanks, Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you, thanks for bringing that into city, appreciate it. Third one is easement vacation for common acres, that is E3, vacation for a horse trail. So... You wanna give us the load on that, then we'll open the public hearing?
Sure, this is kind of a unique thing, originally, when this property was being farmed, apparently at one point or another, a horse trail easement was authorized for people to be able to use that and go north and south, I think probably into the residential development. It was identified by Mr. Bigelow as he was finalizing his project, and he wanted to make sure that it was vacated before he started, you know, having people buy homes that had a trail on the back of them already, so. He's requested this, he's asked for us to vacate that, it seemed like a relatively straightforward request to us, it doesn't affect any of the other properties around there, so.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing, is there anybody in the public who has any comments on the vacation of the horse trail in town? Okay, we'll close the public hearing, I'll entertain a motion to approve the vacation of the easement.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second? Thanks, Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, thank you.
Excuse me.
Okay, old business approved, resolution for the 2021 levy collectible in 2022, we had this discussion at the last meeting, and we're gonna bring back the budget that was presented in the public hearing at the last meeting, that was increased by $30,000 due to the, around $30,000 due to the workers' comp increase that came through. So that is in the packet, are there any questions on that, it's the same exact thing we went over last week and had the public hearing on.
One thing I just wanna highlight is, obviously, this is a budget, you know, there are things that come up during the year, you know, Nancy and I have even talked about a few items that may come up, that we, you know, aren't able to necessarily estimate exactly what the costs are, but we feel like it's an accurate statement of where we wanna be over the next, you know, calendar year, so, you know, that's really where we wanna be, and if things change, then we have to make those decisions when they come up, so.
Let me just look at one thing here. So that, just so everybody knows, that comes in at 6.58%, so that's about a 30% reduction from the preliminary budget that we had back in September, it's about 30% less than that, as far as the increase goes, so. Thanks to staff and department heads for whittling that down to keep it under amount, and with the proposed property taxes that came out, so when people's actual statements come out, it should be a little bit less on their tax there, and for most properties in town, if the valuation stayed similar to the same as it was last year, the tax increase was pretty nil across the board. I've had some conversations with people who had an increase, and again, like last year, the valuation increases what's getting to people as far as the tax going up, but the valuation stayed the same, the taxes stayed about the same, so appreciate the hard work from staff on keeping that below our target.
That's a good point, you know, tax rate actually will drop from 70 to 68 in the next calendar year, so that definitely is highlighting what you're saying.
Yep, okay, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the resolution for the 2021 levy collectible in 2022.
We'll move.
Thanks, Dwayne, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next is the actual budget, which goes with that, that's where we get the increase from, so I'll entertain a motion to approve the budget.
I'll make that motion.
Thanks, Dan, do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Mel, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And utility rates resolution, so that's there, that's the packet that we've gone through two weeks, two meetings ago.
That's right, yeah, we had a presentation from Tim Miller with MRES, based on our electric and water rates, so you can kinda see what those are being laid out as. At that meeting, we had discussed setting a water rates target for the next four years to keep that at a moderate growth rate, obviously, future council can adjust that rate if it feels that it's necessary, but we wanted to show you what that would look like in terms of guidance, and then we also included the sewer end stormwater rate changes for next year. Part of the reason we're doing this separate, in the past, we've done it with the whole fee schedule, we're doing this separately because it's a little different format than in the past, so this will be data, this data will be put into the fee schedule, but the fee schedule itself won't be approved until January, because we're actually kinda pending some of the changes at the Aquatic Center, so.
And just a comment on the utility rates, I mean, nobody likes utility rates to go up, but I think what we've done the last four years, five, six years even, and what we're doing now is, we do these studies every so often to have gradual increases over time versus keeping the same, and then have a big 10 or 12% increase, so it's basically keeping a little bit under the rate of inflation, which is good, and we're able to cover all of our, you know, in our storm area, we've got a lot of capital improvements coming there with flood control, so this is able to even keep up with that and help pay for that, so. With that being said, I'll entertain a motion to approve the rate schedule for 2022.
Make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan, second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Dwayne, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. New business library bids, repairs in the library.
We've got Chris Emers from ICS, and we had an excellent bid opening, some good news for the council, Chris, why don't you lay it on, do you have any handouts for them?
Yeah, I didn't know if you got the...
Yeah, why don't we hand them out to everybody?
Sure. So as Tim mentioned, we had a good bid day yesterday.
So, as Tim mentioned, uh, we had a good bid day yesterday, had, uh, five contractors show up. We had, uh, I believe up to seven looking at it up to bid days. So, uh, for a project of this size, I'd say five bids is considerably a good sign, so. Um, with that being said, uh, the low bid was from Equity Builders out of Rosemont. Uh, we have had a post-bid conference with them, and, uh, they verify that everything is covered in their bid and they are a responsible bidder. Um, so we don't have a reason other than to recommend that bid. Uh, you will note on the letter that there's an alternate number one. Um, we, um, it had to do with orientation of the panels depending on the curved area or the square area. Uh, at this time, we're going to hold that for sixty days and maybe have some more discussion about that. Um, and prior to bid, uh, that was, uh, stated as that was going to be considerably more. Uh, it came in pretty low, but again, at this time, we don't need to make a decision. The biggest thing, uh, upon award tonight that we'll need to do is execute contracts and get them working on their shop drawings, uh, so we can review and they can procure materials. Uh, and then with that, uh, we're looking at, uh, a late May, uh, basically completion, with final completion in June after punchless. So, um, not hearing anything on lead time on panels, but schedules built off of what we understand on the panels. Again, we're living in an era where things seem to change day by day, so we'll keep tabs of that and keep you abreast of what happens. But, that is the schedule and the plan right now, so.
Yeah, so equity builders and construction, experience with this type of building or this type of repair?
They do a lot of metal panel construction, so.
Just asking.
Yeah, yeah, actually, everyone that bid does a lot of, I mean, for lack of a better word, pole barn construction as part of their business. So, this falls in line with that. This is a re-clad, but it's, it's metal panel construction.
And they're based in Minnesota, so we do have recourse if they would.
Correct.
Do you with the last.
Rosemont, Minnesota, so they're fairly close.
Just checking. This is kind of a.
That's the fair question.
Door open wound.
Actually, all the contractors that bid on it were from Minnesota, so we didn't see any out-of-state bids.
Yep. All right, that's the only question I have.
They didn't express any concerns over the fact that it's a domed building, or?
Nope. Uh, actually, this gentleman that was the low bidder actually spent the most time on site looking at the project, asked probably the most questions by far. So, there is that comfort too, that he, he knows what he's getting into, I guess. Call it that, so.
Do you, would you have an idea of why the bid seemed so far?
Probably a good environment. Um, I think he's hungry for work. That's why his number is so low. And it is something that I'm starting to hear out in the, uh, the market right now, that, uh, it's hit or miss who's got work coming up for the next year. Um, so, what we tend to see in that situation is people start to cut their labor costs.
I just didn't want it to come in low and then all of a sudden start adding.
Well, that's why we did the post-bid interview, to verify that he does have everything covered, because when we award this, he's held to this number and held accountable, so.
You know where I'm coming from.
Fair enough.
Yep. Okay. Any other questions for Chris?
Just one thing to reiterate, so I know when we talked about this before for the council's knowledge and essay, is that there will not be interruptions, hopefully no interruption to the actual work at the library. We want to make sure the library's open and available for the public at all times, so.
There may be a little bit, I would call it disruption. I wouldn't call it interruption at the main entrance when they get to that point. But, for the most part, full operation while this is occurring. There may be a little bit of noise, but, uh, again, nothing that doesn't mean the library can't be in operation while this is going on.
The only other thing I had is, um, we had talked a little bit before about regrading and some of those types of components of this project. So, is any of this covered under this bid, or is that something that's going to be done separately?
Currently not. We were going to wait until your other project. Right now, we'll coordinate with that. So, again, if you recall, when we presented initially, we had an initial estimate of about six hundred and fifty grand to do all the repairs. Um, our estimate based on the drawings that we bid out, last estimate was about five hundred and fifty. Uh, the mean number's probably around five hundred, if, based on the bids that we received. So, we were fairly close in what the market was there. But, uh, it sounds like your parking lot project is slowly progressing, so we'll coordinate with that of where we think those tie-ins. We do have the downspouts in the project, so those are all set to go. Um, just some coordination required there, so.
Won't be an issue to include the grading for along the building and the parking lot as a whole, you think, Brandon?
Uh, I guess it's news to me. I didn't know that we even, uh, wasn't a part of that project, but that's something we can coordinate. We'll have a, uh, excavation contractor there working out the parking lot, so.
It's really just drain tile is really what we're talking, uh, some catch basins.
Perfect. Okay. All right, and just to remind council, this is paid for out of, uh, the library has some funds, about a hundred thousand. The rest is coming out of the stabilization fund, so it's included in what we've already approved. There's no adds or additions to the budget. All right, any other questions? Okay, thanks for your work on this. Appreciate it. I'll entertain a motion to approve the bid from Equity Builders and Construction. Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
Second.
Ryan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a safe trip home. Okay, fee schedule H two. As Tim said, that's tentative, and just for our information, we'll approve that in January after we have the rest of the, uh, information mainly.
Linda's been adding items as they come through. We have some different changes coming, some changes at the cemetery and some of the other changes. We're waiting for, as I said, the parking rec, board is scheduled to meet on the fourteenth. So, once they finalize their schedules, um, and then Linda did have a note, there was, uh, some discussion, um, on changing some small fees. So, currently, we charge one dollar per notary service, and the state authorizes the city to charge up to five dollars. So, I, the question from staff was, did you want to take a look at that as an adjustment? And then also the filing fees. Currently, for a statutory city of our size, there's a range. You can charge between two and fifteen dollars, and currently, we're at two dollars. Part of this came up because we had a number of other cities calling and asking what we were charging. They were interested because they're setting their fee schedule for next year, and they're wondering why we have our fees where they're at. So, those are just things to keep in mind. If you're looking through the schedule, if, you know, just to keep that in mind, if you'd like to make any adjustments there, um, you know, there is a certain amount of cost related for us to keep people notaries. I mean, some of that is the sunk cost because we notarize a lot of our own items. But, I did talk to, uh, to, to Jan, and Jan and Linda are two of our notaries. Nancy, you're not, are you? Or, you are too?
But I don't do very many.
Yeah, so, but you do keep the, the stamp, and I mean, there's a cost to that. So, right now, we're probably not quite recouping that cost, but it is something where, you know, obviously, it's a public service as well. So, those are just small items that were brought to my attention to look at. But, if you have any questions at all or any adjustments you'd like to see made, or you think that might be good to tweak, um, just let me know. And then we'll plan on having that for, uh, the first meeting in January.
Perfect. Thank you. Uh, number three, customer service training.
Uh, something that I know I've, I've mentioned to a couple of council members, um, this is a, sort of a long-term project. We were hoping to do some last year with, uh, some of the issues in having in-person meetings. It was kind of put off. And what we're looking at is, um, uh, looking, doing some customer tr, uh, service training for all the staff here at City Hall and throughout the entire city. Uh, so in front of you, you've got a proposal from, uh, uh, Jim Langemo, and actually, I'd, I'd let Ly, Linda talk about that. She's been coordinating this.
Yeah, I got, um, Jim's name from Kathy Plata. He, uh, previously does a lot of training for the Municipal Beverage Association. He will do two sessions, one morning, one afternoon. He's very flexible in when in the morning and when in the afternoon, so that, you know, we can have everybody in the city, everybody who works for the city or anybody, um, come during their work time. So, you know, the, the public works guys, the, the session would be done by three-thirty, so they could go home. He started out at five thousand, and I did talk him down to thirty-five hundred, and I would do the printing, and, uh, then he also mileage.
And part of the reason we're doing this is, if you look at that second page of the, the packet, you can see some of the desired outcomes. You know, obviously, we want to improve our customer service. We have a public utility, um, that has a lot of customer interactions. And at the same time, it's also just good, um, you know, it's good, it's good practice. You know, you look at number five there, mindful greetings, effective questions, uh, trying to, sometimes it's difficult for us to tease out what residents are actually asking. You know, they, they may come in and they may be upset about something, and that's, sometimes it's understandable, sometimes it's, it's not warranted. But, we want to try and provide the best possible customer service. So, uh, what we're asking is that the council would authorize us to spend this money. One thing that Linda didn't mention is, we will be inviting Manorville and Byron, possibly other communities in our area, um, to come and participate, and then we would be charging them, uh, per RODAC fee basically to participate in this.
Because we wouldn't provide a lunch or anything, we'd just probably charge them like twenty to thirty dollars per person, and they could send people. And we would have the training back here, so we could accommodate up to sixty people each time.
Okay.
So, is that a didactic process, or?
Well, I mean, you can kind of see that, what he's anticipating generating, he's anticipating doing these trainings and then having those deliverables. On, you know, he's got a facilitator guide, participant guide, and then a one-sheet guide for onboarding, because we do have a, an issue with, uh, seasonals as well. So, um, you know, obviously, customer service is something that's a constant process. But I think it's just a good reminder for, for, for our employees and, and good training. And if it's successful and it helps, then we may, we may continue to do that, you know, occasionally, maybe every two years or something like that.
I think it's a good idea because you do, you do have unique challenges at City Hall in terms of, of dealing with the public and, like you said, sometimes upset folks that aren't quite communicating effectively with the city employees. So, being able to figure out exactly what it is that they need is a good thing.
No, I agree. But, it's, it's the age of outrage right now, so everybody comes in already at ten before they've even asked a question. And, uh, I know they're putting some pretty good pickles at the front counter. When I've been here, signing papers and hear some of it, it's like, oof. So, maybe just a good way to be able to handle that besides how I would probably handle it, so. So, I'll, uh, I'll entertain a motion to approve. Thanks, Mel. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Dwayne. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Administrator's report?
Uh, you've got my report there and, um, talking about a lot of different things. A couple of them we've already dealt with tonight. I did want to, uh, add in an item, just that's not in the packet there, but it isn't, it is up in Dropbox. It's the, uh, Minnesota Department of Budget forecast that came out yesterday. Um, so, the state's budget, uh, is looking at a substantial surplus. There's different components to that, and, um, we're hopeful that, um, it may entail, you know, some, some positivity for us in terms of the LTA component. But also, um, means that hopefully, there won't be any more tax increases coming from the state of Minnesota. That's certainly a positive for our business community. So, I just wanted to highlight that and let you know that we do think that that's going to provide us with a nice, stable, uh, forecast for the next year.
Okay, thanks, Tim. I will move on to the engineer's report. Number one.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, number one is a final easement agreement between Zed and Holy Family Church. Uh, this is part of the Zed Improvement Project. Uh, you may remember way back when we approved that development agreement, included some installation of public infrastructure, uh, specifically, in this case, water main that kind of looped around the Zed building and then tied into the, the high school area here. Uh, so this is just a final easement exhibit, um, to ultimately give us rights to own and operate that water line after it's constructed. So, um, with that, I believe, um, looking for a motion to approve the easement exhibit, uh, for final signatures and authorization.
Any questions for Brandon on that?
I'll move to approve.
Thanks, Dwayne. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Dan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Number two.
All right, uh, number two here, uh, Fairgrounds Water Tower. Uh, you may remember, uh, two council meetings ago, we approved the plans and specification, went out for bid for the project. Uh, we did bid that project today. Uh, one of the late adds into the council packet is the bid tabulation that you'll see um, in the council packet, uh, was added today. Um, I did a request for council action, wanted to talk through some things on the bid here, um, ultimately asking for consideration of approving, um, the resolution to award the project to Maguire-Ardern for alternative A for two million, six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. Uh, but we think we need to have some consideration or discussion of alternative B there, uh, for just over two million dollars. And I'll, I'll kind of jump into that here through the RCA, uh, request for council action. Um, so, uh, we did provide some alternatives. You can see A, B, C, and D there on the request for council action. Um, A is the, I'll call it, single pedestal, uh, Spheroide Tower there, seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons is what we had in our capital improvement plan, what we were planning. We did a preliminary report. Early on, we looked at the water system. Um, talking to Tim and, and kind of the budget, knowing that these, uh, cost of water towers with steel and everything else we're seeing in the industry kept creeping up. Uh, we did want to consider a half-million gallon tower, so, um, that is alternative B. And then during construction, or excuse me, during bidding, we did have a contractor requesting to be able to submit an alternative for a composite tower. It doesn't cost the city anything more to consider alternatives, so we did, um, allow or bid a, a composite tower. Um, I'm assuming the council's not going to be considering that tonight because it's more costly. Um, generally, is viewed as less aesthetically pleasing, and it also doesn't match our existing tower. So, I'll just mainly talk off of A and B. Um, so flipping to page two there, um, which I think is kind of hinders or, or hinges around our discussion of what size tower. Um, again, our report recommended a seven hundred and fifty thousand gallon tower, uh, which ultimately has a population equivalent of fourteen thousand, uh, touch over fourteen thousand people, based on the current water usage. Um, that includes no additional heavy water users, uh, so we kind of have an average water usage in town. Uh, if we were to have an industry come to town and, and ask for a lot of water, that's going to kind of throw those calculations out, out of whack. So, that was what seven hundred and fifty thousand will provide for you. Again, we looked at a half-million gallon, obviously, uh, less costly, uh, to have a smaller tower, less, less steel and less, uh, painting, et cetera. Um, and that has a population equivalent of just over eleven thousand. I think at the last census, we're what, sixty-six hundred? So, you can see we're growing. Uh, Tim and I were just talking about lots, and it looks like everybody's got their calculators out to project that out for fifty lots a year. So, if you figure fifty lots a year, uh, two point five people, just a, you know, a hundred and fifty people a year is a rough, um, guesstimate of population. But as you can see, we're seeing some dense residential, uh, development, which I don't think the, um, growth that we see in Casson is going to go away, if, as long as the market and everything else stays in there. So, um, obviously, we don't have a crystal ball, um, discussion, uh, what to consider. Ultimately, economy scale, um, build bigger towers as we go. We keep them painted up. Um, it's, it's less costly to build one foundation, et cetera, uh, less right-of-way to acquire. Um, so that's why we kind of look at a projection of a growth out there, how long the tower's going to last before we have to build a third water tower, um, in the city. Uh, one of the staffs, I did talk to staff on what their, their thoughts were in the water department. Their biggest concern is water quality. We get too much water in there, it becomes stagnant. Um, this seven hundred and fifty thousand doesn't concern us. Uh, water systems are kind of hard, uh, to quantify that, but at the end of the day, uh, we're not concerned over seven hundred and fifty thousand gallons. Uh, we're very close to what Byron has, two towers separated, um, kind of in their core downtown area, but also separated nicely, populations and water usage are in the same ballpark, so very similar to their situation, so we're not worried about water quality. Um, so with that said, there is about a six hundred and fifty thousand dollar price difference between alternative A and B, again, going from seven fifty to five hundred thousand gallons. Um, so that is a significant dollar amount, and that will put us actually below what we had in our capital improvement program. Uh, but, uh, six hundred and fifty thousand, couple of years from now, we're building a third tower. Twenty years from now, obviously, that's going to pale in comparison with that cost of tower's going to be. So, um, wanted to, um, at least have that discussion. Maybe I'll, I'll pause there and see if there's any, um, additional discussion or, or thoughts on what alternative to consider.
Well, I agree with you that six hundred and fifty thousand is a big amount now, but if you have to build a third tower, you got to find land, and then you put it out for bid, you're, you're not going to come in with these kind of prices down the road, I don't think. I mean, nobody knows for sure, but.
Absolutely. We're not going to build the two hundred and fifty thousand gallon difference for, you know, six hundred and fifty thousand, just economy scale. We got water main piping, controlling, et cetera. That's kind of all built into there.
Yeah, and then.
Uh, but it's still significant, so I wanted to at least have a conversation today. So, maybe to put a different kind of perspective, we'd kind of kick that cost down the road. And obviously, if we were eleven thousand people, we'd have more rate pairs, et cetera. Or if we had a heavy user that wanted to come in south of fourteen, use a ton of water, then we'd have that conversation and see what sort of cost participation that industry could have. Those are the type of, just things I'm tossing out there that we've, we've had in other cities, uh, when we get in these situations. But again, my recommendation out of the gate was seven fifty. Our recommendation's seven fifty, but it, it's, I wouldn't be offended if the city wanted to go five hundred, um, because it's just something we'll have to account for. But, again, why do we recommend that? Economy of scale. We're not worried about the water quality. Um, it just seems to make sense from the maintenance and operation perspective.
And then down the road too, you're going to have to find land that's going to be equivalent for, for your tower to be the same height and, and what's the odds of that versus you've already acquired the land, so.
I just wanted to state that from my perspective, I, I disagree. I think we should go with a smaller tower, just from, from my view of it, just because of the budgetary numbers, um, you know, talking with Nancy, and obviously, we'll, whatever the council decides, you know, is what, what we're going to pursue. I think Brandon and I agree with that, and, um, certainly, you know, it's a matter of depending on what the market does. You know, if we knew what the market was doing, we wouldn't be here. We'd be, we'd be here, someplace warmer. But, um, I do think that, um, from my perspective, uh, obviously, the council decides. I, I think that the, the, based on the numbers we're seeing, that the fifty houses a year, that seems like it may be a optimistic approach. That population gain over the last census was more like a hundred to a hundred and fifteen people a year, which.
That population gain over the last census was more like 100 to 115 people a year, which would put us at a four-year mark, which, what's the life cycle for these anyways, Brandon?
They're indefinite, you know, you just keep painting them, and they're steel, and they, you know, last forever.
Yeah. Typically, you see a renovation of them.
Yeah, I mean, we, I think we kind of projected out, I think it was like a 2035 number, and got to that 11,000. We figured, well, let's just go with the 750, because that was more of the rounding-up sort of mental, or thought during that, during the development of that report, so that's how we got to that number. So, again, I, I get the discussion. We talked about Highway 57. You know, we sculpted that project in 2017, so we've seen some hyperinflation in our industry, so we're working out final plans, and staff's going to talk about that. But we're going to be gobbling up probably way more of a bigger number than 650,000, to Tim's point of cost of projects going up, and how do we, how do we manage that? So, that's going to be something we're going to be talking here in the next week, so.
Would you know, like, if we build one, two, three, 47 apartment units, what's the rough number of water use out of that? I mean, if it's 47 apartments, you got one, two...
I don't know what their density or...
Probably two and a quarter, I think, is what they usually schedule out per apartment unit.
You know, just after that tonight, if they're talking about one and potentially two, you got...
Also, you'd look at about, maybe about 100 people living in that unit, that apartment complex each.
For each?
Yeah.
My bigger concern would be a heavy water user, that comes into town and needs a lot of water. They can really outweigh the residential usage in a quick hurry.
Especially if you bring in any type of food, manufacturing plant, or anything like that, that's a lot of water.
Even within, a lot of cities like Casson say that, you know, we want the heavy water users, but then they don't necessarily come to fruition. There's not a lot of heavy water users in the area, but it can happen.
It can. I mean, I think, you know, and my perspective is just shaped by, you know, what do we see as economic trends, too? You know, do we expect to see a food processor? Based on cost of land, workforce, it's unlikely. So, as I said, I mean, in the long run, I'm very comfortable, you know, what we will have to do is, if the council decided to go with that larger project, we probably would need to take another look at our water rates.
Because...
Because I think that our, you know, that's going to be an additional 650,000 spread out over 20 or 30 years, and it's going to require adjustment. But water rates would require adjustment anyway, so, I mean, it does.
The greater concern with a heavy water user is not the water, it's the sewer.
Right.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I'm, I got to say, I'm in favor of the smaller tower, mainly because of the costs, and you look at 11,250 people, based on today's 70% increase. It's been a pretty good 20-year run here since 2000, and we haven't had a 70% increase since 2000. And it's not going to, no matter what the market does, we're not going to consistently build 40 to 50 new units a year, every year, for 20 or 30 years. We're going to have a low there, we're going to have 50-some years, we're up 20-some years, or heck, a few years ago, in 2009, we had what, four? So, I don't know how we justify spending the extra money when we know the road construction that's coming in the spring is going to be higher than we had planned on. There's no way around it. I mean, everything costs more than what we had penciled out a year ago. So, I don't know how we add that cost now. If we get to 11,250 people in 25 years, well, then we'll need to build another water tower. But it may not need to be there. If the growth all comes south or west, maybe we need to upgrade the west water tower to a bigger one, or add a third one in a location that's more advantageous for the growth.
Maybe like south of 14, too, would be the other...
Yeah, because they got land, and we just, we're getting that orderly annexation with Canis Steel Township going, and I know there's people that want to bring land in down there, so if we do get more, that might be the location. But we're taking our capacity from, what is it, right now?
So, we've got, what, 125 in the one tower and 400 in the other, right?
Yeah.
So, from 525 to 925,000 gallons.
Basically doubling it.
Almost, not quite double, but that, that gets us at least 20 to 25 years. Because that, if we added that money, if we added that extra 600 and some thousand dollars, we're going to have to have a water rate increase of over 20 years. You're talking probably another 3%, 4% that's going to be there forever, or more.
Yeah, it's not 60, we, we were budgeting a number in between the two, but to your point...
Not the whole 65, but we're going to have to adjust water rates, and I don't...
It's still a cost. I didn't want to gloss over that, because we can budget for whatever.
So, that's my opinion. I don't, I don't think we go with the extra, just because of the extra costs. It does get us at least probably 20 years or plus at the 500,000 gallons. And if we do get plus to have 11,000 people in the city and we have to build another tower, that means we have another 4,650 customers that are paying for it, instead of everybody who's here now paying for what we hope might grow. If we actually get the growth, then everybody that's living here can pay for it. So, that's my opinion. Mel, anything? Ryan?
Just for consistency's sake, when we've talked about other projects where we look at how much do we want to budget for, do we have room to add on it? If we say we don't want to raise the price of a project because we don't want to spend the extra money now, even though it saves us money later, I want to be consistent. I think that the fire department with the police department option, taking that police department option out, might not save us money. Saves us short-term, long-term, but this is similar to that to me. You don't, we're spending more now to save a little later. There's, we're paying for other things that we are projecting out. I would rather not pay for it now and rather wait until we have more population to pay for it. So, I would concur with that.
Dan, do you have something else you were...
No.
Doing anything?
I agree with everything that's been said.
With that, I'll make the motion to proceed with the 500,000-gallon water tan, tower. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Ryan, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Thanks, Brandon. Appreciate it.
Thank you. We got the third one on here?
Yep.
All right. As part of the Highway 57 project, in your council packet is a resolution to accept the right of entry donations as part of the Highway 57 project. Ultimately, this donation from the property owners is to better accommodate the construction of the project, specifically grading behind the sidewalk onto private property, giving us and Mindot's contractor the ability to extend the water and sewer services to the property line, and then ultimately, kind of in the downtown area, construct sidewalks that may go to the building face that may be on private property. So, met with all the property owners, or at least the properties that came out after we sent them all notices and provided us the right of entry forms that are in your council packet. The ones that we got back were more of the critical ones. We had to chase some of those down, but I think we got the more critical ones. Won't comment on any members up here that are part of the ones that are chased down, but...
I forgot to send mine in. Guilty.
We got it. It's in the packet, so, so we're moving forward. So, asking you to consider a resolution to accept those right of entry projects, or, excuse me, right of entry forms for the project, so.
Did you get all of them?
We got a little over half of them. You know, we sent them through the corridor, and sent the notice out to property owners, and then, like you said, we chased down kind of the critical ones, we had some grading concerns. We may still pursue them with the way kind of Mindot projects work. If this is a city project, we won't be so maybe critical on this stuff. Mindot wants us to approve this, so we have the right of entries on the construction plan set, so we can go to final design, and then know that we're building everything within the project. If things tweak later on, we'll deal with that more during construction. So, it's a little bit of a different process that we have to deal with here, so. We, we still may looking at that or having that conversation during construction. And we'll be part of the utility construction early on in the process, so that's something that we'll work with the property owners. So, I just wanted to make sure the ones we needed to construct the project and get the plans approved from Mindot was still moving forward, because spring is coming, believe it or not, so it takes a while to build a big project, so.
Yeah, what is the, where are we at timeline-wise? I know it's a little off-topic, but it's a good question.
It's still going to be a late winter, spring bid, and start away right away in the spring. And it'll be a whole construction season, and a little bit of a sidebar, but Tim and I just talked about having a meeting with the chamber again to talk about some of the phasing plan. We do have the project phased to start against south of the fairgrounds, it's kind of phase one. Get 34 Main Street open back up as soon as possible, so that's going to be continual construction. During that kind of first phase, we'll be using 7th as the main road to get across 57, and then get Main Street, 34 back open, and then after the fair's done, do in front of the fairgrounds, so. We do have a detour out on the dump road into the backside of Manorville, and then we do have some signs for local businesses to get them all kind of back into Main Street along the school.
So, you said you want to use 7th to get them across?
Yep.
Something the city should consider and make sure. Last year, there wasn't a cross guard there the whole time during the pool. This year, we really need to make sure there's a crossing guard there at all times when that pool's open, if we're going to be detouring traffic there.
It won't be a detour. The detour for Highway 57 will go out to the dump road back, backside of Manorville. But we all know that the local traffic...
Is going to go there.
...detour, so it's going to be the unofficial detour, the local detour, because you know...
Sure. I just think it'd be something to look into to make sure that...
To your point, it's going to be heavily traveled.
I, I think, Ryan, I won't be able to be at that park and rec meeting next week, but that's something definitely bring up, and it's a, you know, there is a lot of use for the kids there, especially in the early parts of the season, you know, June, July timeframe. So, I think that's definitely a really valid...
You get a lot of kids there and a lot of traffic, and...
That's the question. I've had people ask me to, like, local access. So, I mean, you know, during the project, will people still be able to cross, or is it due, going to be open trench kind of the whole time?
The real problem is, I mean, you can sometimes cross over, but you're going to be digging a trench through.
Right.
And then they're going to get down with that trench, and then they're going to backfill it, and it's going to be kind of put back together, you might be able to cross, and you get another trench through, and a third trench, and then a fourth trench, and then they're going to come in, subcut the road two feet. So, it's, it's kind of hard to say that a side street's going to be open, because we still need to bid, you know, build it, not to mention get people, you know, as close as we can to their houses.
Sure.
So, that's why I want to send everybody up to 7th. We might have intermediate crossings everywhere. I don't want to rely on that, just because it's just, it's just unreliable, and then people don't know when the roads are open.
Well, that's where they're trying to tell the...
And for me, 7th isn't that big of a section to get around for business, especially we have its sign, so that was, that was kind of the route that we went.
Is it going to be done the same way that they did the third, fourth, and fifth, in terms of how things, like they do the bottom level?
Yeah, it's going to be, you know, pipe trench, pipe trench, pipe trench.
The answer is no.
Yeah, it's just difficult.
It's not.
Not to mention that, you know, the road section, by the time you cut the road out, then your driveway's up here, and, you know, it's just so tough to do.
Right.
And we have a temporary sidewalk route and stuff, and we'll be bringing that forward here as we kind of finalize that. But if there's any comments, concerns, I'm happy to kind of address as we go through, but it just is, I don't know how much more we're going to be able to restrict the contractor in that sense.
Sure.
So, it's just going to be a messy season, so.
Okay. Thank you. So, we have, the business at hand is the resolution for the right of entry forms for the Highway 57 project, so I'll entertain a motion to approve those.
Make that motion.
Thanks, Ryan. Do I have a second?
I'll second those.
Dan, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Make sure the state knows we did their red tape for them, so they're all good to go. Personnel K-1, recommend hiring for emergency services administrative assistant. This is backfilling a position that was vacated. So, we have a recommendation from the police chief?
We do. I don't know if you want to talk about it at all, but I think we had a vigorous process. We had a review committee that we hired a number of good applicants. We had a really tough time differentiating. We had some really strong people, and we completed those.